Going to call to order the Tuesday, May 16th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, this six o'clock regular meeting hour. And at this time, I would like to ask Vice Chair Conley to give the invocation for the Board of Commissioners as we seek guidance and wisdom in the work that we're about to do for the citizens of Iredell County.
Our most gracious, loving, heavenly Father, please be with our board tonight as we do the people's business. Sometimes politicians forget who we're supposed to be working for. We need to be working for the people, and we ask for your guidance to direct us in that task that we are in. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to make a note this evening that Commissioner Haupt was feeling unwell, so he will be participating remotely. And Commissioner Haupt, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. So, Manager Moll, do we have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am. We do have one addition, and that's under Administrative Matters, item 8.6, and that's the discussion with Lake Norman Volunteer Fire Department.
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion.
All in favor? Uh, we give...
Oh.
Thank you.
I'm delayed too.
You were delayed too, as well. All right. So, moving down the agenda, and we're going to move things around just a little bit. We have a EMS that's in route. Is that correct, Blair? I'd like to... That way, we will wait for that part till everyone is here. So, let's move on down the agenda to the appointment before the Board for Iredell County Child Fatality Prevention Team Annual Report. And we have Amanda Treadway here as chair to give us some information. And I also like to share that I'm on that board or task force as well, that team. And thank you for being here this evening. And we have other representatives from that team as well here. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Chapman-Treadway. I am the Regulatory Compliance Officer for Iredell County EMS, and I come to you this evening as chair of the Child Fatality Prevention Team. I believe there is an appointment to review for a member of one of our team at some point, but what I have for you now is our annual report and presentation. North Carolina local child fatality prevention teams are governed by North Carolina general statute, as well as an agreement addendo with the local health department. Across the state, local teams advocate for system improvements and needed resources where gaps and deficiencies in services exist. Pursuant to that agreement, the Iredell County CFPT reports annually to the local Board of Health and Board of Commissioners. We have three main purposes. Number one, to identify deficiencies in the delivery of services to children and families by public agencies. Number two, to make and carry out recommendations for changes that will prevent future pediatric deaths. And three, the understanding of the causes of pediatric deaths. Here, we have a listing of the agencies and departments that are represented on our team. And at this time, I have a couple of CFPT members available that were joined us this evening. If you would, please stand. We have Andy Webster, Chief Cool Springs Fire Department. We have Lisa Famolo from the Partnership for Young Children, Brandy Best from Children's Developmental Services Agency, Laurie Troseuk from Ferris Parenting, and Chair Neder. Each of these individuals is an expert in their own right. At some point in tomorrow's meeting, we're going to sit and collect the years of experience of our members, just to know how many decades and perhaps hundreds of years of experience we have sitting in this room, working on these problems. It's really an extraordinary group of people. We are fortunate to have five community members. Within the statute, we're given the opportunity to have five different community positions. Those are all full, and a lot of them are members who were formerly on the CFPT as part of their professional role and chose to stay with us. So, we are extremely fortunate. So, what do we do in these meetings? Primarily, we are there for case review. Case review is held in closed session. Our presentations to the Board of Health and Board of Commissioners are classified as public meetings, and that brings us to a total of eight meetings per year. The meeting... Or the case review is confidential. We bring together records from local agencies, anyone that may have taken part in investigating that case. We review birth certificate information, as well as information from the Medical Examiner's Office. Due to case volume, we do choose to meet bimonthly so that we can have plenty of time to review every case. Most teams only meet quarterly, but due to our volume, we have to meet more often than that. Data collection at this moment, there is actually no access to a comprehensive data system for child fatality teams in North Carolina. NC Detect is a system that many agencies are familiar with. It's a surveillance system. Unfortunately, it doesn't capture every piece of information related to child fatality data, which comes from a large variety of sources: EMS, emergency rooms, primary care. It's a hard thing to collect all of that information into one place when it comes from such disparate sources. Data from the Office of the Medical Examiner is not dynamic. It takes a lot of time for toxicology and autopsy reports to come back, and we have to wait until all of that comes back in order to be able to review the case. North Carolina is one of only two states that do not participate in the National Child Fatality Review Case Reporting System. I wanted to get that right. That is a system that would actually give us the ability to aggregate child fatality data by county. It would get down into socioeconomic causes and means of death, that sort of thing. These recommendations were made by the state Child Fatality Task Force. Some are currently at the legislature, especially participation in the case reporting system. These measures were supported by North Carolina DHS and adopted at the Child Welfare Reform Plan, in the Child Welfare Reform Plan that was submitted to the legislature in 2019, but the changes have stalled since that time. This gives us challenges that create opportunities to be creative about how we do our work. This graph is a collection of the annual cases that are reviewed by Iredell County Child Fatality over... Since 2015, you'll see that there is a sharp spike in 2016, then it declines. So, what I'm presenting to you today essentially is primarily 2021 data. That's the most up-to-date data that we have. And we have 18 cases for 2021. One way to visualize 18 fatalities is to think of it as one classroom. That's a metaphor that was used at the state summit. So, we think of that as one classroom worth. We've experienced delays in receiving our data to review some of these cases. For example, at our meeting in March, March 23, we had cases from 2021 to finish reviewing. So, we've got a lot of delays caused by COVID and caused by backups at the Medical Examiner's Office. There is a spike in 2016. I've gone back through this data to try to identify what that spike comes from, if it were... If it was cases, or if it was related to data, and I've been unable to do so, but I continue to look for opportunities that explain that. So, to recap and provide a little bit of context for today, we'll start with 2020. That's about the last year that we have good data, and that is also where things begin to become complicated. Birth to one year of age experienced the highest number of fatalities across the age group, with a total of 16. Four of those were lost to birth defects, eight to perinatal conditions, one to unspecified illness, two to motor vehicle accidents, and one to drowning. The remaining four fatalities in 2020 were related to suicide, with two in the 10 to 14-year-old age group and two in the 15 to 17-year-old age group. Looking at 2021, our primary focus this evening, birth to one year also had the highest number of fatalities at 11. Two children lost to birth defects, one to a perinatal condition, one to hyperthermia that was related to being left in a car seat in a hot car, and seven to unspecified other causes. The other causes categorization is broad and general. It was new in 2021, and our data for those cases is still incomplete, but we are working towards having that complete for all of the... All of those cases. In reviewing the Iredell County cases that fall into that other causes category, we noted a couple of contributing factors. Number one, unsafe sleep practices without having met criteria for SIDS, Sudden Infant Death Syndrome, or a newer categorization for that is sudden unexplained infant death. Another factor, parents and other children in the home positive for methamphetamines and marijuana, but the child that was the fatality had a negative toxicology report. Also, one of these, the information that we received to review was that it was an accident with exposure to an unspecified factor. So, we simply didn't have the information to really understand what was going on. In the two- to four-year-old range, we lost one child to birth defects, one to motor vehicle accident. In the five- to nine-year-old range, one child to birth defects, one to homicide. 15- to 17-year-old range, we lost two children to illness and one to suicide. We believe we reviewed all of the available cases that we have from the state, but it is possible that we would have additional ones for that year still come through. I wanted to present suicide data related to North Carolina. You'll notice that this graph is divided into ages 10 to 14 and ages 15 to 17, with increasing suicide numbers across the board. Something that I want to point out here is that there is not a category for children under the age of 10. This is because the CDC definition of deaths related to suicide starts at age 10. However, there are suicides under that age group, and our county is represented in that population, unfortunately. This is something that we deal with. Homicide rates remain high as well. North Carolina is the orange graph there. We are 1% above the national average as a state. In 2020, firearms, for the first time, passed motor vehicle accidents as primary cause of death by injury. That continued on into 2021. Part of the task of our group is to make recommendations to you on... Based on the information that we reviewed. In 2022, our team had a unique opportunity to review a near-miss case. This is a case for a different county, one in which a fatality occurred... A fatality did not occur, but significant injury was sustained. Two recommend... A couple of recommendations became clear in the review of that case. We noted the individuals completing that investigation encountered difficulty as they were trying to obtain records from other agencies. To address this barrier, we would recommend the development of a standardized means of record exchange between agencies. Second, additional support for caseworkers with intensive caseloads. This involved a child that was hospitalized for several months. That's a lot of time for a caseworker to be traveling to a pediatric center, sometimes during inclement weather, while sustaining their normal caseload as well. In reviewing deaths related to unsafe sleep practices, we took inventory of several community partners that are offering education on this topic. We began strategizing on how to leverage that knowledge base a little bit more, and I'll address that further in just a moment. Fourth, education on safe firearm storage and reducing access to lethal means for suicide prevention. In reviewing one case, we noted that a firearm was still available to a child after a previous suicide attempt. Families caring for children that struggle with mental health would often benefit from additional education and support. Reducing access to lethal means is an effective prevention strategy for suicide. And lastly, support for see-something, say-something programs. Our schools have a lot of these programs in place. There's even apps available. There are many means of doing this. In one of our cases, we noted that the child sent goodbye messages that were not reported and were not responded to. We would recommend collaborating further with school systems in order to reinforce and expand these existing programs. This type of program centers on recognizing an individual that is in crisis and keeping them safe in that moment until they can reach help. This year, we completed our activity report. We submitted our confidential reporting forms to the state also, which is our paperwork requirement. We have completed all of that. This year, we have welcomed a new review coordinator, Chelsea Pinter, from the Health Department. We welcomed Detective Kevin Sherard from Iredell County Sheriff's Office, Afton Davidson from Head Start, Desiree LaPorte from Iredell State's Full Schools, Crystal Hobbs, parent of a child who died by suicide, Chair Neder, as well as Tenille Heilmann from Guardian at Lydum. We attended several regional trainings, and for the first time in several years, were able to attend the statewide summit in Chapel Hill. This year, we collaborated with State's Full Housing Authority to distribute information in English and Spanish regarding safe sleep practices. This information was something that we were able to obtain at no cost, no budgetary expense, and it created a great relationship with State's Full Housing Authority as well to partner with them, and that's a relationship that we really value. We hosted an educational session that was taught by Susan Toll from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and she told us a lot about the potential programs that are available, as well as the efforts in Iredell County. And in conjunction with Safe Kids and the North Carolina Department of Insurance, we were able to distribute over 700 smoke detectors to local fire departments to be installed in their communities. What are we doing for 2023? We are going to be repurposing some of our existing resources in order to collaborate with the newly-formed Iredell County Firearms Safety Coalition. There are many different means of securing firearms, and we're working to assist with options that provide access to the appropriate person when needed, while still protecting children that do not need to have access to the firearm. We're working on a safe sleep initiative that incorporates all of the following into one event: a passenger's... Child passenger's safety seat check, a visit to the pampered pantry at the Partnership for Young Children, which supplies wipes, diapers, items to care for your child, one hour of safe sleep education that's provided by a North Carolina state credentialed instructor, as well as a pack-and-play. So, this is a one event that will incorporate all of those. It has an educational component, and we make sure that that child is safe across a variety of areas. And lastly, we'll be collaborating with local schools to present accessible suicide prevention education for parents and teachers. We're looking for options that would cater to working adults that have a lot to do in the evenings. We don't want to infringe on instructional times. We're trying to reduce the barrier to entry of folks that are coming for education. Many people want it, and it's something that they really desire, but if you have to make dinner, you have to make dinner. So, how can we do that in a way that really incorporates parents and makes it easy for them, as well as our instructors? Our team's practice at this... At the end of our closed review is to take a short moment of silence to reverence the lives of the children that we reviewed that day. In keeping with that, if you would, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. We are very grateful for your support, and we really appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. I would ask if any member would like to respond or comment or...
What you do.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you do. And, you know, people realize it touches every socio-economic, and you could think, you know, that child is from a blessed family, blessed more than most, and those issues are still there.
Absolutely.
And I will tell you that, you know, everything that's out in front of these kids today, they pick up this, and everything's at their fingertips, and there's... And in the world today, we think about, there's always a reset button in their world.
Right.
And so, I'm very appreciative.
Thank you.
There's a lot of things that go on in this big world, and we're a big county. We've got a lot of people, and there's a lot of kids out here that have a lot of things on their mind, a lot. So, and a lot of people don't understand that. So, we appreciate what you do. Appreciate the team.
Commissioner Haupt, you have any...
What do you got? What... Thank you for your presentation. What do you guys do, or what do you think could be done more than we're doing to help with the mental health situation with these kids and the struggles that they're fighting with these electronic devices and all the things that's at their fingertips today?
There are many, many efforts in place, especially in the school systems, but making those efforts truly accessible, basically more education, more support for parents and caregivers that are wanting to do that. Something that we continually see throughout these reviews is parental engagement. So, having parents engaged in the status of their kids' lives and providing them the education that really empowers them to take action in their kids' lives. And we do that by reducing barriers to entry. So, making... We have everything available to us. It's how do we actually get them to hear the message? So, that's what we're working to do. Education is always a great place to start. The school... Iredell State's Full Schools in particular is putting a lot of effort into providing additional mental health support with the folks that are going to be coming onboard, also reducing the stigma of reaching out for help when it comes to mental disorders. You know, when it becomes treated in the same fashion that other medical problems are treated, we make it more accessible.
I think one of the things that... Having a child in high school, helping parents come up to speed on technology.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's... The kids can take a phone and do more in five minutes than most of us collaboratively can sit here and do in five days. And so, if there's programs out there to maybe help educate parents into programs that monitor, and if that's something if y'all looked at, or, you know, support, so...
And that's part of what we're trying to figure out for this year. That educational component is key.
I've been impressed...
Thank you again for what you do.
Thank you.
I was impressed from the first meeting on with the folks that attended the meeting from all angles, and the willingness to come up with solutions when there's situations, offering their expertise, their ideas. When a child... The simple things that we don't often think about during the day. You're going to pass a car going down the road. There may be a child in that one that's not in a seat. Not only in a seat, but the seat needs to be installed correctly. So, back in the day, you tossed your kid in a car, you went for a drive, it was what happened. Now, there's all these tethering straps that hook to where and what and how. So, there's experts out there, such as Iredell County Partnership for Young Children, has those technicians... Technicians to install a child's safety seat. I believe we have those at fire departments and all too, but I will say to parents, if you're not quite sure how to hook that thing in, ask for help. Please, reach out to any of your local fire departments, EMS, various things, and we can connect with that, or go by the Iredell County Partnership for Young Children. It's just things you don't think about, because the worst thing that can happen is death of a child. We sit there and talk about and try to figure out, how can we, as neighbors, family, friends, prevent it from happening again? And one of the things that just slaps you in your gut is to know that suicide is discussed and accomplished at the age under 10. Under 10. They feel the need that they can't face the next day. So, that is where these difficult conversations take place at these meetings, and then it goes out through organizations. So, if you, in your daily life, feel that you need to connect with Treadway here through EMS, because you know of someone, somehow there's another way that we can prevent another death, say something, help us. If you see a parent or a kid, we're all around everybody else, and sometimes we forget to look. This is where solutions happen.
Yes.
Difficult conversations, but it's necessary, because unintentional. But accidents...
Look for a thing.
Yeah, accidents are not on purpose. And in such situations, there aren't any redos. So, just knowing that there are solutions out there and knowing that there's safe sleep. So, children sleep on their back now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Wasn't the way it was years ago.
Right.
So, somehow, we made it through by the grace of God and our parents and those around us keeping an eye, and we just got to help keep an eye on everyone else. Commissioner Haupt, did you have an additional comment?
I just want to say what scares me as a parent, and my wife as a principal, is, you know, we all, all of us are guilty, you know, along Brad's lines. We don't take the time. We're all busy. We don't spend enough time with our kids and sit down and say, hey, how's your day? Has anything bothered you? What's going on? You know, we have to inspect what we expect as far as these devices and other things. And I just want to admit, you know, from our perspective, along with a lot of others, we do not engage with our kids nearly enough to know what's going on in their life, you know? There's some harsh situations these kids are dealing with, with bullying, you know, whether at school or social media or whatever, and they don't always feel like they can tell us about it. And that's problematic for me, because it's going to lead to that suicide you talked about.
Yep. There's an unlimited list of things, but thank you for continuing, and as well did other team members for being here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, Blair, do you have everyone in attendance that needs to be here yet? Oh, that's fine. We can... Actually, if we would... We can, actually if we would.
Public hearing?
Yeah, we could, let's go ahead and do the public hearing.
Go ahead and get that done.
Yep. So let's take a look on, let's look down your agenda, you will see item 7.1 there, the public hearing. Thank you. Switch over in your agenda to that one.
So this is a public hearing to consider revisions to the Aridale County personnel ordinance and Ms. Sandra Gregory is here to make this presentation to the board. And if you remember, she had gone through these updates or revisions with you at the previous meeting, she'll go through those again and then we'll open it up for a public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you and good afternoon. Let me do a little refresher about what we talked about at the last commissioners' meeting and I'll summarize our current policy and then I'll summarize the recommendations that we have for changes to the policy. The current policy rewards the employee a percentage increase of 9% for a promotion or 5% for a reclassification. If that doesn't take them to the minimum pay of that grade, then they automatically go to the minimum of the grade. So it's whichever is greater, the 9 or 5% or to the minimum of the grade. There's also a section in there that gives the county manager the authority to approve a higher increase when it's deemed necessary. The revision that we would like to make is requesting an additional option to help us determine the percentage of the increase that the employee will, will receive. Excuse me, I'm sorry. This option actually calculates a percentage increase based on a scale ranging from 1% to 10% that is determined by the employee's years of service. And in addition to that, we would add on an additional 1% increase per grade that that position is increasing. So the overall policy would read basically like this. An employee will receive a 9% increase for a promotion or 5% for reclassification or they will receive the total percentage increase that's ranging from the 1 to 10% based on the employee's years of service with the county in addition to that 1% increase per pay grade. Or the employee will be moved to the minimum of the salary of the new grade, whichever of all of that is the greatest pay increase for them. The increase determined, again, is going to be based on whatever's the highest of the three of them and they will never receive less than 9%, less than a 9% increase for promotion and never receive less than a 5% increase for reclassification. That's the bare minimum. Lastly, we would like to request that this section for the county manager to have that exception to adjust that accordingly. We would like to leave that in the policy in case there are unusual circumstances moving forward. So we respectfully request the provisions to be approved, which we believe will allow our employees the opportunity to be promoted from within with a more gratifying increase, which in turn will boost morale and we feel that it will improve retention within our recognition of the years of service, will also help us to maybe dodge having any future compression issues.
Excellent. Any questions for Sandra?
No question to comment. As a former employee, you know, it just levels the playing field so that, you know, it makes it sometimes for, especially for the public to understand is sometimes you could wind up hiring someone with no experience in making more money than somebody with a lot of experience. And the way our, our ordinance was written, it kind of punished, if you will, or didn't reward the employee the same as the new hire. So we're wanting to make sure that we're, if we've got somebody qualified internally, we'd want to make sure that they're on a level.
Right.
Playing field. And that's the reason for the revision.
Certainly has changed in the employment world.
Yes, it has.
When it comes to attracting and retaining. So any further questions or comments on that? All right. I'm going to open the public hearing in regards to this matter. We didn't have anyone signed up for this one? Okay. Well, in that case, I will close the public hearing. In regards to this matter, do we have a motion to approve the revisions?
I make a motion we approve the revisions as noted by Sandra Gregory.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Took care of a lot of issues on that one, so thank you. All right, now let's circle back around. Yes?
Let's just get Blair to the end.
You just, they do look nice standing back there, don't they?
Great. Blair in like a suit, you know.
What's the word, gussied?
So now let us look at item number five on our agenda for presentation of special recognitions and awards. Recognition of the Aridale County Emergency Medical Services Paramedic Competition Team.
If it's all right, I'd like to give a little background to this competition and how we arrived here today. So Brandy Mitchell and Austin Huntington agreed to participate in the state competition, paramedic competition this year. What that looks like is there are different regions that are all over the state that they are basically assigned to and they went to region two and won region two at that competition level. I will say this is the first time that Aridale County has run, has won at the state level and then this also projected them to the state competition. That was I believe April 30th of this year. And I'll give you a little bit of a picture of that state competition. I had actually never attended. I sat through every, every service that went through. They did an amazing job. But to paint that picture, they had approximately 30 live actors, they had bleachers, they had a live band, they had cameras, they had sound effects, they had lighting, they had anything you can think of. So this competition consisted of a dispatch to a choking victim at a country western bar. They arrive on scene, that immediately turns into an active shooter situation. They are led into the scene by the highway patrol and then chaos ensues from there. And so our team did an excellent job this year. They did win region two and we are super proud of them and very, very impressed with the efforts that they gave. It was horribly stressful. So thank you for taking the time to recognize their efforts and the ability that we have right here in Aridale County in these two paramedics.
Absolutely. That's fantastic. I've, I've got to ask y'all some questions though. So you didn't know ahead of time what the situation or the call was going to be? Did you have no idea?
We were like sneezing into a room and couldn't see.
We knew nothing.
So as that was going on, there were other teams from other parts of North Carolina, is that correct?
Correct.
So were they able to see or were they held separate? So did they each get a same scenario? Okay.
Yes. But they stay in the room with us. We're all there together until the, one of the teams, like the first team that went was, do you remember? Anyway, Mecklenburg was in the room with us. So like whenever Mecklenburg's turned, then they went out and done their scenario and then, once they were done, then the next team would come out and go.
What was going through your mind at that time?
What did I get myself into?
Did it feel real?
Yes. It's very high stress because I meant that could happen around here.
Yeah, real world feeling.
Enough to where the judges told us that they, what did they say? They, like they'd never do it themselves.
Yeah.
I was stressed sitting in the bleachers. Let's just put it like that. It was stressful for me sitting there watching.
Watching on that one too, so.
On top of that, like you're doing it in front of like 300 people. So, and most of those 300 people are also paramedics that you work with or paramedics from other counties. And so on top of that, that's stressful too because you're being judged by.
So you've got your peers, you've got a performance piece of it, you've got the pressure, you feel like you're being tested and they are mic'd up and you can hear everything they're saying.
And, and the screens were on the walls, up, up.
Yes. They had cameras. They were on TV the same way.
We had other people who've seen the same scenario in the bleachers every single
time, so they knew how the previous team did it. So you're also being judged based off of the last other team.
Did you check each other's pulse rate by any chance during this?
Probably not, no.
That's exactly. This is outstanding. Do you have any questions or comments from the board?
Just fantastic, you know.
So proud.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Take great pride in your professionalism that, you know, competition makes us all better. And I appreciate you representing Aridale County well, Team Aridale. And I think it's just a lot of, of great credit to, to yourselves, to your profession and to Aridale County as a whole.
Are you going to do it again?
She said this was her last year, but.
But you got to do it again. You can't let that be the last too. So outstanding on that one.
Shows that Aridale County's the best.
It is, it is.
That's right.
Excellent. Well, I think we should give them a round of applause on this one.
And I've got to see your plaque.
Put your cardboard stand up in the picture.
Okay, I appreciate it.
University College Aridale County EMS, Brandy Mitchell, Austin Huntington, sponsored by NC Office of EMS, NC College of Emergency Physicians, NC Association of EMS Curriculum Educators. Emergency medicine today, Greensboro, North Carolina. Wow, this is impressive. Y'all are well done. Hold this because I didn't do the work of that one. I was going to stand here. I can't see.
Didn't we just see a county commissioner push work off on the aisle?
You can't see Bert. Bert.
Standing in the gaps, standing in the gap.
Any other, okay.
Thank y'all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. It thanks what you do every day.
Yes.
So while our EMS partners are here, do you, do we want to go ahead and deal with the administrative matter?
Let's please. Blair, you're not leaving yet.
Don't leave yet, Blair.
Wait, no wait. Yeah, their first administrative matter, manage them all.
The first item is a request for Emergency Medical Services to proclaim May the 21st through the 27th of 2023 as Emergency Medical Services Week and Ms. Blair Ritchie is here to make this presentation. Sorry Blair, I had to grab you before you took off.
Oh, no, I just didn't want to forget the plaque. That would be bad. So, thank you for having me again. Good evening to everyone and I appreciate you doing this at the six o'clock hours. So just a little background for EMS Week. In 1974, President Darryl Ford authorized EMS Week to celebrate EMS practitioners and important work that they do across the nation. So National Emergency Medical Service Week brings together local communities and medical personnel to honor the dedication of those who provide the day-to-day lifesaving services of the medicine's frontline. We appreciate the consideration of the Aridale County Board of Commissioners for hearing our request to proclaim EMS Week for 2023, be recognized as May 21st through 27th of this year. The theme this year is where emergency care begins and this could not be a more true statement and I have a little bit further on that just to give you a few more details of why we are the best. I would like to share these details about the abilities of our service here. The past, this past July, we began participating in a research trial that was designed to study someone who suffers from their heart stopping and needing CPR. And it actually follows the patient from the time of the 911 call all the way to discharge to home. So it's a true study from that start to finish. The trial is actually called RACE CARS for short. It stands for Randomized Cluster Evaluation of Cardiac Arrest Systems and it's the first registry-based trial that's on cardiac arrest to be conducted in the United States. So I feel very, very privileged to be a part of this study since it's the first one. So this one is one of the first studies, like I mentioned, that tracks a cardiac arrest patient from the time of their heart stopping all the way back to home. So as of April 5th of 2023, there have been 106 survivors enrolled in the study across, across North Carolina. So we are not the only county participating, we're one of many. Of those 106 survivors entered into the system, 20 of those came from Aridale. So that's almost 20% of the entries since last July have, have been contributed from us. 18 of those were discharged from home with what we called a CPS, a cerebral perfusion score of one, which this simply means that they were able to return home from dying to basically being able to go home and have a quality of life very similar to the one before they had to make that 911 call. So truly saving a life and, and not, you know, being discharged to home where you can't get up out of a chair or you can't go back to what you were doing or you can't go back to work. So, and these efforts are truly because of the medical care on scene. Due to the fragile nature of the situation, we no longer transport anyone to the hospital until we've stabilized that patient, their heart is beating again. So that's, that's been a practice of care that's changed for a number of years, but all that care is done where we found the patient until we get them stabilized. So to me, there is no better example of a life saved and I am tremendously proud of our team just since July of this year. That is how many, how many people have been saved in this county, truly saved. And so just a single example I wanted to tell you guys about. So, thank you.
Impressive numbers. That's interesting to have this information in front of us because so many times you'll respond to cardiac arrest.
Mm-hmm.
Do what you need to do at that time and then that's the end of it. And now you're following up to see if the changes are beneficial.
And this study has helped us really put those two pieces together. So not, not only are we participating in the trial that's five to seven years, it's going to help things later on, it's helping us know what we're doing correct.
So, no better proof than that. Interesting. And this is also your EMS week?
21st, yes.
It is indeed. So, yes it is. Proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2023 as Emergency Medical Services Week. And would you like to add anything else before we read the proclamation?
No ma'am, thank you.
Okay. So it's my honor to read the EMS Week proclamation. To designate the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023 as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now. Therefore, the Aridale County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023 as the 48th Annual Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme of where emergency's care begins. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities. Congratulations.
Thank you.
On that one.
We could not do this work without the support of this board and our management team. So thank you.
And I appreciate that too. Saying it wasn't that long ago today, I recertified on that with Lynn. So times have changed and the whole procedure with CPR has certainly changed on that one as well. So any additional comments?
Motion to approve, ma'am.
Yeah, motion to approve. Thank you. I was so excited to hand her the proclamation. Motion to approve the proclamation. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, unanimous. Would you like to receive your proclamation?
Sure.
She doesn't want to.
You got to come up here though. You got to come up.
Got to get your pitch, man. Blair, thank you for you and your team and to everybody in the emergency services world.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that. I know, I just, y'all keeping up okay over there? Oh, good, all right. So that takes us to the administrative matters.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. The following items were items that were discussed at the four o'clock pre-agenda meeting, and the board agreed by consensus. The first item was an update on Older Americans Month from our Department of Social Services. We also received an update on the Foster Care Appreciation Month. Also, the update was given by our Department of Social Services. There was a request to call for a public hearing on Tuesday, June the 6th, 2023, at 6:00 PM to consider the fiscal year 2024 budget. There was a request from Tax Administration for approval of the April 2023 refunds and releases. And then there was a presentation and discussion with Lake Norman Volunteer Fire Department regarding an additional budget request and funding request. And that was received for informational purposes, and it was referred back to staff for further review. All of those items were agreed by the board, consensus by the board.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion, will you approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous on that one. So moving down our agenda, we have no announcements of vacancies on boards or commissions, and no appointments to boards and commissions. No unfinished business, I'm aware of. And it is public comment period. It is the second meeting of the month. And I would like to briefly just read over, before we begin, the board conducts a public comment period at the second regular meeting each month. And the purpose of the public comment period is to allow citizens to speak on matters related to county government. Each speaker that has signed up is allotted three minutes and will be called to the podium by the chair in the order names appear on the sign-in sheet. Please state your name and address before beginning your comments. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole. Responses by the board are at their discretion, but public comment period is not intended to be a question-and-answer period, but rather a time for the board to hear from the public and take such matters raised under advisements. Citizens will be expected to have civil in their language and presentation and not engage in slander or name-calling. Citizens should not discuss any matters which are closed-session matters, including, but not limited to, matters regarding personnel or matters which are made confidential by law. Speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are encouraged to leave a copy of such remarks and documents with the clerk to the board. So at this time, I'm going to open the public comment period, and I'm going to ask Terry Miller to please come to the podium and state name and address, please.
I'll let Ms. make these comments tonight. My name's Terry Miller. I live at 1596 Jennings Road in Statesville, North Carolina. I'd like to address the 2045 Plan, Horizon Plan. I had some concerns with the area west of 77 at Exit 59. I think that was addressed in the public meetings that we had at Union Grove and several other things. I'd like to know what the procedure is for approving the 2045 Plan because I think they addressed the land west of 77, west of Jimmy Craven's house, and actually included it in industrial commercial this time instead of rural commercial, as it was before. Which I don't have a problem with rural commercial. I don't have a problem with industrial commercial. I just have a problem with being west of 77 on Exit 59 because all of our businesses that's west of 77 on 59, with the exception of Carrion's One Stop, supports agriculture in that area, everyone. There is one that supports Lowe's Distribution Center now, which is behind Carrion's One Stop on Lent's Road. But everything that's west of Carrion's One Stop supports agriculture. And I don't know whether you figured this out or not, and I think most of us have in here. If we go home and we sit down and you bring in three bags of groceries six months ago, it's $120. You bring in two bags of grocery three months ago, it's $90. You bring in one bag of groceries now, and it's $60, $50 to $60. For every acre, and I'm not gonna give you any disinformation here, and I know we've talked about it. But for every acre of agriculture that you take out of Iredell County, that there bag of groceries is just gonna keep going up. A long time ago, my father used to try to convince my mother to buy a new tractor and farm fast. I know what he means by farming fast now. And the McLean boys, the Manises, and everybody else is about as fast as they can go. So if we lose that there acreage and change it, we need to protect it in the 2045 Plan. And I don't think it's been addressed as it should be at that level in the 2045 Plan. So just keep the farmers in mind. Just keep them in mind because I like them three times a day. I really do.
Amen.
On it. And they take care of us too. And they're farming about as fast as they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Amy Miller?
Amy Marie Miller, 131 Castle Pines Lane, Statesville, North Carolina. I wanna thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I haven't really been quiet on the subject of the 2045 Horizon Plan, and I don't intend to be. I have always intended to be respectful, even if some of my smart aleckness came through once or twice. Every person sitting on that dais is successful, whether as a public servant, public servant and a member of the military or an entrepreneur. Success in any endeavor does not happen by accident. Rather, it is the result of deliberate decisions, conscious effort, and immense persistent, all directed at a specific goal. That's all I'm asking you to do. You can't micromanage the 2045 Horizon Plan. You guys don't have that kind of time. Nobody's asking you to. But give deliberate direction and let the experts work. This central place theory, as I've outlined in great detail to an email, y'all, it's being set up to fail because the assumptions needed for it to work aren't there. They're not. So are we going to have a plan in place that we set up to succeed? Or are we gonna have one that's set up to fail? That's the deliberate decisions that I would love to see you make. You've been successful. You know what a deliberate decision is. You're capable of it. You're good people. Make it here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Boyce Sherrill.
Madam Chair Commissioners, my name is Boyce Sherrill. I'm a native of Mooresville, and I've been an Iredell County resident and a real landlord my entire life. I currently live in Jonesboro, Arkansas. I came home this week, perfect timing. It's great to hear a little bit about the great things that went on in Iredell County, and great to hear about the farmers. I'm talking a little bit about a precursor to your public meeting on the 6th of June with the budget. From data that I've received from your website, I have spoke to a person today in your finance office. Information gathered, also reported in the record in Landmark. From my data, after the reassessment, it is, our current assessed rate is $53.75 per $100. And if I understand the numbers correctly, revenue-neutral number is $39.86 per $100. We have a proposed budget of $0.50 per $100, which is a 25% tax increase. We spoke just earlier when this gentleman prayed about doing the people's work. We hear about the cost of groceries. Iredell County has been in a great position over the last 30 years, the boom that has taken place, especially the South End. I know as it moves north, that more of the industrial side of things has taken over. And it, you know, it looks like we've got solid growth here for the next five years or so. But in your deliberations over the next several weeks, as you make your final decision, we're at a 25% number that I see right now, which is based on projected revenues at 2022, '23 of $265 million. We're gonna bump that up to $323 million, which is a, what is that, $23 and $35, $58 million increase? I just don't see that as being a wise choice to make. And in light of all the situations that we face with inflation and the other, the cost factors that our residents are going through, your efforts in trying to make whatever that increase is as light as possible will be greatly appreciated, I'm sure, by not only myself, my family that lives in this county, and the county residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have Mike Kubinek.
Good evening. Mike Kubinek, 125 Huntington Ridge Place in Mooresville. I come before you today just to provide a little information and a key ask. So in the days leading up to the election, no one ever talked about our poor performing of schools, but fortunately, elections have consequences. And yes, we are talking about our poor performing of schools, the three of those in Statesville. Just a few things. We've talked about a recent mental health grant for $17 million we received. We are increasing incentives for those teachers to serve in those schools. We're participating along with Statesville in a community violence task force to deal with some of the street gang and school violence in the schools. We've got three top-notch principals in Third Creek, MB Mills in Statesville, that I think are gonna turn things around. And we've hired in a few truly excellent educators to help us come up with some new ways of thinking on how to teach students, not to teach subjects to students, but to teach students. So I encourage you to get out to a school when you get a chance. And that leads me to my second topic. I had an experience in a school several weeks ago that was most disturbing. It was the most disturbing thing that I've experienced in my life. I went into a sixth-grade classroom at the beginning of the day, and the teacher's getting the students together. Morning announcements happened, the morning pledge happens, and then the pledge of allegiance. And I stand up along with the teacher, and we're, I'm saluting the flag, and I'm doing the pledge of allegiance. And as I sit down, I look out of the corner of my eye at out of a classroom of 20 students, one was standing. One student stood up for the pledge of allegiance in a sixth-grade class. I was stunned. I was, I couldn't sleep for days. I'm still distraught about it. Have we losing our country when one kid stands up? What happened in grades K through 5? So my ask for you as elected officials is when you're out in the community, whether you're out at a school, you're out at a public event, when you're out wherever, stand up for the values of our country. Freedom's not free. Brad Nice wrote that check, that blank check, to ensure everyone has freedom. It's cool to love our country. It's cool to stand up for our flag. It's cool to be patriotic and to love our military. And we should be teaching our kids that in our schools and in our, and every day of our lives. So that's my key ask for you. It doesn't cost you a penny. But I hope you can rally around that, those sentiments. And I'm looking forward to working with the school system and some others to change some things within our civics curriculum to kinda take a turn on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. And thank you for your service.
That is all that have signed up for the public comment. Is anyone burning with something that they just can't leave this building without sharing? Okay, then I will close the public comment period. And that takes us to Commissioner comments and updates. Do we have any comments or updates from the board? Bert, anything?
It's been a long budget time, I guess you can say, county manager.
It has.
And our finance people sitting in the back. We're a big county, and we're growing. And, you know, it's been the cross, called the crossroads, you know, of Iredell County. And it's got its good and it's got its bad. And that's just one way of saying it. We're blessed on one side because we have growth. And then the other side, we're not that blessed. We've got to build schools. We've got to figure out something with our fire departments, our emergency services, our DSS is taxed. Everybody is just maxed out with what we're doing and what we are providing. We're gonna have to borrow $40 million on top of the $80 million school bond in hopes that that can bridge the gap for the school on the South End. And then we've got a couple more schools that we're gonna have to look at doing. And we're talking about lowering the tax rate some. We can't lower it as low as probably what we want to lower it because of the needs and the services that we have to do. And we receive a lot of unfunded mandates that come from Raleigh. Medicaid expansion.
Huge.
You know, politicians in Raleigh and DC, they, you know, we did this, we did that, but guess who's gonna pay for it? We all are. And it puts more and more on us. We've got the 2045 Horizon Plan that we're looking at. I mean, we're growing. I mean, you got someone who's had property all their life, and they pay taxes, and they wanna sell it or they wanna do something different with it. I mean, it's America. So you've got a balance there that we gotta do. And it's a hard balance. But we've got a very good board. I'll be honest, I was kinda critical to some of the decisions that were made years and years ago with some of the previous boards and some of the comments and things that were made because I don't think that we were looking out as far as what we should. But I'm happy to sit here with folks that are, we're trying to look ahead. We're trying to see what's ahead. We're not just trying to say what's gonna get us by for the next year or two years. We're trying to look ahead. And we gotta forward think. The fire departments, especially in the South End. I mean, you can't pay people now to come and hardly do a job anymore, much less get people to volunteer. So that's hurting our fire departments. That's hurting our nonprofits. That's hurting everybody. And there's a lot of people in the room right now, they know what we're talking about. Somebody's sitting in the room today, he has seen so much change of the people who get arrested and incarcerated in this county. And it's sad. More people, more people go to jail. More people, more people need schools. So we are a growing county. We, as a board, will try to keep it as cost-friendly as we can. But we gotta provide the services. We gotta provide the unfunded mandates, find the money. We gotta find everything. There is so much red tape in this world. I know it from my side that I work at now, and I know it from sitting up here. And it's sad, it really, really is. It's sad. And our country, the way it's going, all I can say is pray for it. Pray for our country, pray for everybody. But we up here as a board, we will try our very best to do. We've got good staff, and we're gonna back our staff. And we're gonna back our people, and we're gonna protect our people. And that goes with every single person, almost 200,000 people in this county. And that's what we're determined to do. Thank you. Thank you.
Well said.
I just want to kind of play on to what Commissioner Conley just said. Having served as a department director here for 20 years, to the citizens, you truly live and, and represented by your departments that run on one of the leanest budgets. I know, I wrote my budget for 20 years. I know how long it took to justify a veteran's assistant, what it took to get some help for the 17,000 veterans plus their spouses. But as we go through this growth, and, and we, we see this increase, and we see the number of houses, as houses come, that brings children, and we've got to build more schools, that brings more cars, we've got to have more roads. To put one ambulance, one ambulance, one more in service somewhere in this county at staffing is eight minimum. That doesn't even include for vacations or sick time. Eight people to put one, one crew on, on the streets to, to service. You know, we're talking the south end with the traffic, you know, we've heard from our fire departments because of response times, being able to get there. I was a taxpayer first. We talked about agriculture. You know, I was riding around the other day and tettering hay. So those that are from here know exactly what I'm saying. Some people going, doing, "What the hay? What the hay did he say?" But I was tettering hay. And, you know, after 21 years in the Army and 20 years as veteran services, and I realized for the first time, truly, truly recognized for the first time how blessed that I was to contribute that much to agriculture world, that I'm, that I'm a part of it, that I get to be a part of it, that I understand it, that I grew up that way. But as we look at these budgets, and, and their legitimate needs, and you're looking at, at the schools, you know, right behind this, you know, we've, we're, Iroquois County kind of does things a little different. We've, we've saved money, you know, we save money to build things so that we don't have huge debt. With debt, what comes with debt? Interest. And because where we are now, if we go into great debt, now the interest rates are up. So that all, we, we get it, and the, the needs are, are real. We want the best fire service, we want the best ambulance service, we want the best, but we do it at a very, very economical rate. We are, right now, currently, the, the lowest tax rate in our region, 14th lowest in the state, and almost everyone that is lower than us in the state now is, is an economy-driven by tourism. When they get those big dollars for occupancy taxes, what's the number one industry still in Iroquois County? Agriculture. It ain't racing, and it ain't Lake Norman. It's still the number one industry is agriculture. So with that, that becomes, there's imbalances. People look and say, "Well, you're not having to pay the same taxes in the north." Well, a farmer can't afford to pay the same taxes. He can't. So we have to balance that out and be able to serve the entire public, the, the entire county. And we're as different from north to south as we are east to west. But it's finding that balance and making sure we're protecting everyone. Where my heart is deep in the soil of the North Iroquois area, I still care about every citizen in Mooresville. So as people talk to us about the tax rates, I need them to understand that everything, we're not insulated from the issues of inflation. We're paying more for diesel fuel for those ambulances and those fire trucks. We're paying more for tires for those ambulances and fire trucks. Understand, as we go through that, I live, it's, the little funny story is, I live with a hidden night address, 28636. I had people show up when I decided to run and say, "How can you run in Iroquois County?" Because I live in Iroquois County. I can't help the post office? That's the federal government, they've got it messed up already. But if you moved my farm, less than a mile, and I was in Alexander County, my farm value is the same. But the tax rate in Alexander County is 79.5, .795, 25 cents more, 26 cents more than I pay here. If we lower the tax rate bottoming out, what do we do? We're throwing, we're putting up a sign that says, "Hey, everybody, come on, come live here, because I want to build a house here, because the tax rate's going to be lower." Then we need more roads. And we already know where we're at with roads. So as, as, we're having to look at that as property owners, and, and I'm not insulated. I had one piece of property, mine went up 67%. I'm like, "Holy smokes." But we're not insulated from that. And we've got to use the revenues that come in. It's not sitting up here that we're, that we're thinking we've got something great. We understand the cost it comes at. We have to buy groceries too. But we still have an obligation to provide good, timely, effective services. It's growth that's finally came that everybody wondered, "One day." Well, guess what? One day's here. And it's going to continue to boom. And I will tell you, I, I, I live on a little 39.7 acre, .57 acre farm, and I love it. And I thank the Lord every day for saving me from my stupid self of, of not selling. So as you're looking as an individual taxpayer, think about the burden and all the other things that you, as taxpayers, and I, as taxpayers before, didn't think of, that we impact, that we have to provide mandatorily. And, and we don't provide a lot of services that aren't required. Would you want us to cut cultural issues? I, I want my child to have a library. I don't think that's mandatory. We don't have to have a Parks and Rec, but I want my children to have a place to, to go play, and my grandchildren. So I will tell you, you, you live in a very blessed county. And if someone said, across this county, we're blessed not to be the, the have and have nots, there's the have and have more's. So thank you. Please consider that as, as you're looking at that increase that you're, that you believe you're facing.
And, you know, I'm, I'm right there with you. One thing I want to know, Amy, were you, were you saying I was an entrepreneur, a full of manure?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I don't know if you was talking to me or Melissa, but...
Well, that one, you've got the manure business.
That's true. I do have a lot. With 2,000 animals, I have a lot of it. But, but anyway, you know, and, you know, going back on Commissioner Conley, you know, if you'd have asked me five years ago before I ran for commissioner, you know, I was all about, like most public, I'm going to go in there, I'm going to cut this, I'm going to cut this, and I'm going to cut this. And Commissioner Robertson told me one time, he said, Scotty, he said, "I'm going to tell you, when you become commissioner," he said, "You will be commissioner." He said, "When you come, become commissioner," he said, "There's not a big hole out there that all this has fallen in." He said, "We, we've got a great county." And we do have a great county. And, you know, what people need to understand is, we're not perfect. Nowhere close to being perfect. You can ask my wife. I know, speak for myself. But, but we're, you know, we try to do the best. And the one thing about this board here is I can guarantee you, we don't make a decision on our own. We, we talk to each other, we figure out what we're going to do. You know, when I first, one of the first things I pushed hard was SROs in all the schools. I didn't want a SRO in this school and that school, or this school. I wanted one in every one of them. And I said, "You know what? I do not ever want to have a shooting in one of our schools, and I'm the one sitting here with the ability to have put an SRO in that school." So that was one of my things I pushed hard. And we got it done easy. Everybody was, you know, was for it. I mean, we pushed it and got it done. But that, that's money, you know, we spend probably a million dollars a year on, on SROs, but that's a million dollars that's well spent. And, you know, we talk about the, the 2045, you know, it's, if, if we're not careful, and I know, and I'm a farmer, I have, I farm 500 acres, and I love farming, I grew up farming, I mean, my whole life I've been a farmer. But you've got to understand too, there's, there's, we don't have the ability to tell a farmer that inherited his grandpa's farm that he's going in, in the red every month, that, "No, you can't sell your farm." But what we can try to get them to do is don't sell it to housing developments. Don't put 500 houses out, because when you put 500 houses on that farm, you're killing this county. Because every housing development in this county kills us because we have to build more schools. And, and then we got, for, for every housing development, you know, you, you think it's just, just a house and, and the schools, but you've got a 500 housing development, there's average three cars per house. You know, there's 1,500 more cars. Then you've got Amazon coming in there on 200 houses a day, you've got UPS 200 houses a day, you've got the trash guy coming in there, and you've got the, the, you've got everybody coming in there. So we're, we're making more traffic, and we don't make a dime on taxes. People think we want houses? No, we don't want houses. Now, do we have the right to tell you, "You can't move to Iroquois County"? No, we don't. We want, Iroquois County's one of the greatest places, and I've lived all over the world, and I'm from Iroquois County, I was born here, and I go place and come back, and it's still the, the greatest place there is. Would I love to see my taxes less? Mine went up over a million dollars. But I don't want to invite Mecklenburg County up here. Mecklenburg County is a big shark, and we're a little fish. They want to swallow us up. And we've got to fight to keep them down there. And I grew up here, I don't know how many of y'all guys grew up here, but, but I was here when Mooresville was downtown Mooresville. There wasn't no 150, you know, and Statesville had nothing, especially what we're getting up here now, that's crazy. But, but we're, Charlotte has boomed and boomed and boomed. And I don't know how many of y'all guys know this, you know, when I was a kid, Charlotte was like 75th in the largest cities in the United States. And you think, how does, you know, that's, that's where it should rank. Today, Charlotte's number 12 in the United States. How did that happen in my lifetime? But it's, it's got more and more and more. And do I want to be part of Charlotte? Heck, no. But, you know, I can't tell those people they can't move here, but if we lower our tax down, I mean, we're, we're at 50 cents, like Brad said, we're, we're at one that, we're the lowest of all the nine...
At 53.975.
Yeah, at 53, we're lowering to 50. And, and we've got to build a school that's going to cost whatever, 100 and some million dollars, and then we've got two more schools. Now, we have a great team that, I mean, and we've been, y'all guys have no idea, and I know these guys, we have lost sleep over this budget. I mean, completely. And, and lowering the tax rate has been a hard thing for us to even decide to do, because, you know, we need all the money we can get, because we've got to build three schools. And if we don't build the three schools, you know, we're going to be at the creek, we, I mean, we've got all these kids, got to go someplace, we're going to stack them on top of each other, and we can't do that. The government requires us to build schools. So, you know, we have to do things we don't really want to do, but, like I said, we, we're trying to keep, I mean, I like to see all the agriculture farm, and if, if I can, if there's a farm for sale next to me, I buy it. And I tell all the people in Iroquois County, "If you don't want to see an industry in there, you don't want to see houses coming in, get your neighbors together, buy it, keep it in farm." These farmers need land. But you cannot tell a person that they can't sell their property. But what we can do is, is decide whether we're going to put a, a plant there that we have, that makes us money, that keeps your tax rate low, or we can put 500 houses in there, and we're going to have to spend a billion dollars to, to accommodate those 500 houses. So, you know, I know people get mad at us and think we don't know what we're doing, and, and we're not the smartest people, we're not rocket scientists sitting up here, I can, I can tell you that, that's for a fact.
Why you looking mean to him?
Because, boy, I'm telling you, he's way down it. But we, honestly, we, we do work together, and we're, we're a great team. I, I promise you, you're getting your money's worth. And, and it's not about money, because if y'all don't know what they pay us to do this, we all lose money doing this. But we do do this because we care. We, we honestly, we all care, because I could be at home tonight doing something else.
I could be mowing hay right now.
Yesterday, yeah. Yesterday...
Did it rain up north tonight? Oh, I could be mowing hay tonight.
I got, I got 50 acres down up north. But, but, you know, we're, you know, we're all busy, but we do care, or we wouldn't do this, I promise you, we, we would not do this. My wife, she tells me every day, "When are you going to quit? When are you going to quit?" And tonight, you know, I had to come in, I had changed clothes, I was cutting hay, and she says, "See there? If you weren't commissioner, you could sit here and finish that hay." Because I'm, now I'm griping about, I got to get this hay cut. But we do care, I promise you we do. We're not going to make everybody happy. We, we never will make everybody happy. But let it, we just want you to understand, give us some time. We do know with this group, not one of us can do it. It's, that's why there's five commissioners, because all of us talk, and we figure it out, and we, we work together. And we don't all agree on things all the time, but we talk about it, and we figure it out, you know, just like we're talking to y'all. And, and you, you know, I hope some, some of y'all go home tonight and say, "Man, that makes sense." That, you know, this is why we can't lower tax rate, or why we change the horizon in a certain area to, to commercial instead of agriculture. Because when you leave it agriculture, you're inviting houses. So, you know, people need to know that. And that's where we do get the education, and we get it from, from our leader down there. She's, she's the, the one that knows everything. And, oh, yes, she does. She's, I'm telling you what, this lady, we are so lucky. Iroquois County is Iroquois County because of this lady right here. And she, she keeps us all straight, and if we're going to get sued, she takes care of us. So we got one on both ends that look after us.
And that one right there.
Which one?
Susan Robertson.
Oh, Susan Robertson, yes, she's, she is out there. But, man, we do have a great staff here, guys, you, you just have no idea. We got the knowledge, I'd, I'd hate to see how many years of knowledge we have in Iroquois County and, and people, you know, they keep giving us a hard time, giving our staff a hard time. Don't give our staff a hard time, give it to us. We, we guys, we, you know, that's, that's who you're supposed to give a hard time.
Scotty's number is 74.
Mine is public, you can go online, I got two telephones, and, you know, come to, come see me at my job. But thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate y'all. We appreciate, you know, these guys that come here and speak, you know, we, we're here, we're here to listen. And we do listen, and we take it back between us, and we talk about it. So, thank you.
And something you brought up real quick, little caveat, is, you know, as this 2045 is being developed, it's not done.
Oh.
It's got to come back to us at least twice. So it is not a done deal. Don't believe that just because what you're seeing out there is the way it is.
Yeah, let us finish.
Yep.
Then complain.
Commissioner Hough?
Melissa, I've got a, Amy's got a short video that I want you to watch. The context of it, it was on the Today Show, national program promoting Lake Norman's VRBOs, and I've got some comments after the video, if Amy will play it.
Doug, I think Doug's doing it remote.
I think so.
She got scammed. No, there's, she's enjoying an early start this summer. Dylan, what's happening in North Carolina?
Guys, you know what? I am just enjoying the lake life here. We are so lucky to be in Lake Norman in North Carolina. I honestly had never heard of this place before, and now the secret's out, because it is absolutely gorgeous. And thanks to our sponsor, Verbo, we've been taken in the view from one of their top vacation homes of the year. And this morning, we are joined by Melanie Fish, a travel expert with Verbo, and you're here, good morning.
Welcome to Lake Norman.
It's so beautiful to be here. And, and you're going to talk us through some of the top vacations home, vacation homes of the year, and also give us some travel tips as people start to think about their summer getaways. So first of all, Lake Norman, I can't believe I had never heard of it. It is absolutely beautiful here.
Isn't it great? You've got the lake, there's golf nearby, and you're so close to Charlotte, so it's really easy to get to. There are actually more than 700 private vacation rentals in the area, including this one, one of the vacation homes of the year. Actually, Verbo's releasing the full list today.
So, speaking of the full list, there are vacation homes, obviously, with Verbo that you can rent all over.
Thank you, Amy. I just wanted to, I saw that today, guys, you know, been homesick, I was watching TV and drinking coffee, and we've all been dealing with the short-term rental VRBO situation in Lake Norman, and there's 750, we're trying to figure out some ways to, to help regulate it without trying to keep these people from having a business. But we've got to also try and protect our residents that live there year-round, that live beside or adjacent to these businesses that are being run as businesses in residential neighborhoods. And so I just wanted you guys to see that, and I want to piggyback on the comments you guys have made before. You know, we talked about the revow, where the market rates are established in over 600 neighborhoods throughout the county with buyers and sellers. We, as commissioners or staff, don't manipulate the market rates, as you guys know that, but a lot of citizens don't realize that. We can artificially impact the, the market rates by, after the revow by lowering the tax rate. But as all of my colleagues have mentioned before, there's pros and cons to growth. The, you just saw a pro that you're going to have a whole lot of people wanting to come here to a wonderful county. But the cons are, we have growing pains. I'm on the NCAA C board of directors and represent eight counties in North Carolina. And a lot of people would love to have our growing pains, as we say, or our problems. But we continue to make investments in our county as a board over the years, and this one now, as, as my colleagues have mentioned, for quality of life issues. You know, we're not required to do libraries, we're not required to do recreation, we're not required, this will surprise you, to do fire departments. But we do that for quality of life issues, to keep your interest rate, I mean, your insurance rates low. And all these departments, the volunteerism's going away. As Bert said, we can't keep people to fill these jobs that are paid, most less volunteer. So I want to say thank you to all the volunteers that do things in any industry in our county. We have, uh, Brad mentioned and Scotty both about the agriculture and the growth. And I just want to say, as one of your commissioners, we hear all of you, Scotty mentioned it, as well as we, we understand your frustrations and issues. And one of my favorite sayings is, is for you guys, before you judge our actions, ask us our options. And we try to tell you guys more informatively as we can what our options are. If we lower the rate to revenue neutral, we cannot provide the quality of life, uh, services that you want. We have twenty-six county departments that Beth manages. We have nineteen volunteer fire departments and rescues that we help fund to, to make sure when you dial nine-one-one, you have somebody coming. Um, we have the schools as our biggest mandated function, as Brad mentioned. Um, so when we have balanced and smart growth, we want our commercial industrial to outpace residential, as these other ladies and gentlemen have mentioned. Because otherwise, you're going to have higher property taxes and people can't afford to come here. But we try to balance all of these needs and wants and pros and cons of growth and do the best we can with the options we have while providing you the services and the quality of life that we think you want. We think Iredle County is the best county in the state and the best county in the country. We live in a top-two state in economic growth in the country. We live in a top-ten county out of a hundred counties in the state of North Carolina in almost every category. That's because we have great commissioners, we have great citizens, we have great staff to help manage the departments that provide you the services you do. So I just wanted to put in context, like my other colleagues have done also, as we continue to make investments in all these things on your behalf. But we cannot lower the rate. There's an argument to be made, I think Scotty mentioned it. If we do all the things we need to do and are required to do, we shouldn't lower the tax rate because of the business, in, in business sense, you shouldn't lower the rate when you know you've got all kind of things you're required to do. But we're trying, as the gentleman said, we're trying to lower the rate like the manager requested or recommended to give some relief to our citizens. So we're trying to balance what we can do and have to do with what we're trying to help you with. And so we want you to realize that. And we're doing the best we can with all of our impacts and, and we do take you serious. But thank you. I apologize I couldn't be there. And, um, I want the citizens to know, you know, I've served with a lot of great people. I've got a great board that I served with today. Staff, and we have a lot of citizens. We appreciate your feedback to us. You know, we get a lot of calls, but we can't fix every problem. But all we can do on your behalf is make the best decisions of the options we have. And thank you, and I appreciate it.
And that can.
One more quick thing. As you sit here and you think, Scotty said something about how lucky we are to have, uh, Beth Mull as our county manager. And as we look at our tax rate, we've got a, we've got a school board member here tonight. These schools are coming. Schools have got to be built. We just, uh, passed a hundred and twenty million dollars to build a high school. We know some elementaries and possibly another high school, maybe another middle. Our county manager, like I said earlier, we try to pay as we go. Try to keep the interest down. So instead of wasting money in interest, we put, we save back and we set aside ten million dollars for a future high school. We've already started that savings.
Elementary school.
Excuse me, for, for a school.
For a school.
For a school. We've already started setting those monies aside so that what we're hopeful is we don't have to go back out to the, to the people for another bond and do it without raising taxes because we know what happens there. And, and so how blessed we are to have somebody that has, that, that looks into the, the future of what is in, not what we think is coming, what is inevitably coming. You know, the only way we're getting out of this is death or, or, or the Lord coming back. And, uh, so, uh, we've got to always look forward and hand it off to the next generation better than we found it. So those are the challenges we face. So thank you for your, your leadership, Beth.
Absolutely. I believe the gentlemen have covered everything. And so with that, though, um, the one thing that was not touched on, but very critical too, is we shared how wonderful our staff is, but one of those pieces is explaining every time we make a decision, you can't make a decision if you don't have all the pieces of the puzzle. There were people who sat in the seats before us. There will be people sitting in these seats after us. So it's understanding what has happened and what's going to happen and what we have to work with. So I understand things so much more clearly when you explain it to me. There's so many pieces and, and so, because when you open a budget page, it's paper. You bring it to life. And y'all were the life in our, in our county. So I appreciate citizens too so much. But, and with that, I'm going to take it down to the agenda, any new business? Okay. County managers report?
Two quick things. Um, the longest table, which is an event that United Way does, that is, um, Tuesday, the twenty-third, starting at five o'clock at Statesville High School.
And come see me, I'm serving.
There you go. Your chair is serving.
Mike too, so you've got a little restaurant experience there.
And then Cooperative Extension is having a volunteer appreciation event on Tuesday, the thirtieth, at six o'clock, I think it is. Um, so those are two events. And just on behalf of staff, thank you to the board for your work, your efforts, your support and giving good guidance on the budget. I, I appreciate all the kind comments about, about me and the staff. But without good, solid direction and support, it, it's not possible. Staff can't do their job without leadership and you guys provide that and you provide it clearly. And when you tell us to march forward and we do, you back us and you don't hang us out to dry. So we appreciate that.
Teamwork. Yep. And with that, we did have closed session. And out of that, we should have, uh, motions.
I would like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on June sixth at six P M to consider an economic development incentive up to six, uh, sixty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars for Project Crew based on the company's investment of three point two million dollars in Iredle County.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. And one additional motion from closed session?
Got a, uh, a motion to approve the purchase of four point nine six acres located at, uh, Dietz. Is that what it is? Dietz Road? I don't know who Road is. Which? Sorry. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Were you paying attention?
Reading is fundamental.
That's true. Which includes three separate partials from the Fox family and, and the estate of Dorothy Higgs-Klein for a purchase price of a hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred.
Got that part right.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for that.
I've got one too.
Oh, we.
Then I've got another.
Yeah, I was going to say.
We have a total of four.
Yes.
Yes. See, that's excellent. Thank you. Your turn.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on June sixth, twenty twenty-three at six P M to consider an economic development incentive up to twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars per project ISO based on the company's two million, fifteen thousand dollar investment in Iredle County.
Motion by Vice Chair Conley. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. And we have.
One more. Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of twenty-three point two-six acres located at three twenty-B Street, Statesville, from Peggy Gray for the purchase price of not to exceed eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, aye, where you.
Waiting on Jean.
Aye.
Right. Motion passes unanimously. Down to.
No.
What?
You know, I always get to think of the funny things, right? But this isn't funny. We forgot one thing as we were talking about what's coming up. So before our next meeting, to me, the third sacred holiday. There's Christmas and Easter. You can pick whichever is most important to you. But we will have Memorial Day prior to our next meeting. And, uh, as the veterans in the room, um, please remember the difference between Veterans Day and Memorial Day. Memorial Day is to pay homage and to honor those who have fallen. Please remember to honor the spouses, the children, and the mothers or fathers of their fallen soldier. Don't thank me for my service. I'm in awe of them. So please remember that as you're enjoying your fireworks and your hot dog. Take that moment to remember freedom is not free. And they all, those, some of those folks paid the ultimate sacrifice or died after service. So.
How many veterans we have? How many veterans we have here this evening? Please stand for me. Spouses in the room. Veterans spouse, thank you.
Oh, you got to stand. You got, you got the best, you got the hardest job in the world. You got the hardest job in the world, dear.
Wow, special. Thank you for making these comments as well because without veterans, we wouldn't be where we are. Tremendous. Are all hearts free?
Amy, we're going to have to get a lock thing to put on that air-conditioned thing over there because somebody keeps turning it up. So I just want to tell you thank you for everything you do for us. Seriously. Seriously. Seriously.
And I got you back on there. It's just hot in here tonight.
But that is one thing we can't agree on, okay? That is clear. Some of us freeze and some of us.
Bring a jacket.
Yeah. Somebody has a broken thermostat.
You can put on more clothes or I can start taking them off.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Quick, please say aye.
Ah.